Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that six members of the council are present. Councilman Steven Vincent is excused. With that, our opening ceremony will be from Councilmember Tom again.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just want to try and invite all of you to stand up and do a bit of religion with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a scout group here tonight of some sort, or at least I see some uniforms. So, and I think you mentioned to them, someone is going to come up and introduce your troop. You don't need to introduce each person, but just generally your troop number, why you're here tonight, and generally the schools you attend, so we kind of have an idea in the city without disclosing any other information.
We are Troop 664, working on citizenship in the community. And one of us goes to Benyon, another goes Eisenhower, and the last one goes to Kennedy.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. I think that that was the, I'm gonna just double check. That's all I see. Oh, and now we usually recognize elected officials, so we'll, and I'll do again, are elected but not in office yet. Jake Fitzsimmons, we appreciate you being with us tonight. You're always welcome and look forward to the swearing-in ceremony here in a few months. Month and a half?
Yes.
No, I said a few months. Nate called me on it. I was being too general. What is the day of it? The second?
Parts of two months.
Parts of three months?
Parts of three months. On the third month, we'll have the swearing-in.
Okay. Let's see.
So he would be referred to as Councilmember-elect at this point?
Councilmember-elect. Thank you. The council is very helpful, and I need all the help I can get. So, I appreciate them a great deal. The minutes is next on our agenda, November 14th, a motion from the council on the minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passed unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next, we have a proclamation on Small Business Saturday in West Valley City. It will be my opportunity to read that. Whereas, West Valley City celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent more than 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, are responsible for 63% of net new jobs created over the past 20 years, and small businesses employ over 48% of the employees in the private sector in the U.S. On average, 33% of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at small, independently-owned restaurants, bars, excuse me, I skipped, and at small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants. 91% of consumers in the United States agree that supporting small, independently-owned restaurants and bars is important. 76% of consumers plan to go to one or more small businesses as part of their holiday shopping. West Valley City supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. Advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of West Valley City, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2017, as Small Business Saturday in West Valley City, and urge residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Takes care of that. Next, we go to our public comment period. We note that we have a couple of people signed up. Probably won't have much more than that. And so, we do have a timer we've added. Probably won't need it tonight because we'll, I don't think we'll hit 30 minutes. But with that, first on the list is Mike Markham.
Okay, guys. I hope everybody had the chance to read this, being as nobody got the responses for the email I sent out, but hopefully everybody read it. Everybody got a copy last week. In the study meeting, the whole vote was missed. I'll skip the parking issue, which was line one. Down in section two, a lot of my discussion and trying to describe to you the development up here on 2700 South and about 4500 South, 2700 West. The old gravel pit that is now going to become a development. In the renderings that they showed, it shows that the developers being allowed to take away the right-hand side of the road, which is, I would classify that as the shoulder. So, just as you peek the top of the hill, on the north end of that development, there's going to be a curb and gutter that jots inwards towards the road, and then go down alongside the development. Then it gets to the state property. Where's the state going to put their curb and gutter when they, when we force them or when they decide to put it in? Are they going to jog back in? Are they going to stay back out in the road where the new development's going to be, and then let it go back in where the car wash and the gas station's at? I see no reason for that jog. If you kept the curb and gutter going down the exact same line that is existing there now, which is, the curb and gutter backs the houses on the west side. If it went straight down there, and then it would join up where the gutter, curb and gutter is, up at the car wash and gas station instead of the jog. That shoulder needs to stay there. It can leave right-hand turn lanes for the development. I wish we could bring it up on the screen, but Jake said that it's not in his system anymore to look at it to where I could explain it. But I've also got in here where, I hope you all had a chance to drive past that area before you voted yes or no on the development. You know, I hope there's some homework done before we vote on some of these things as far as our roadways go, and parking, because you know I'm an advocate of parking. Parking on the streets is another issue, but we can do that another time. But to take that away up along 27, I think is a horrible mistake, to take that shoulder away. That curb and gutter should continue straight from the houses, going straight south from there, and then eventually it will join up with the car wash and the gas station. Don't know what the state will do with their problem, with their property along there. What they're going to do with the curb and gutter and the sidewalk, they seem to do what they want, but if we're going to go that far, we probably ought to see if the state will put curb and gutter in along there, too. But the development was to narrow the road, leave it in there, and you got right-hand turn lanes out of traffic. You can turn right in, you can turn right out, rather than slow on traffic. So, you know, maybe I watch some of these things more than I should. I realize it's none of my business. You guys make the choices. There's another development that I was talking to a person about, and they didn't even see an entire section of the development and a road that was going off to the side because it was needed. On the layout, it wasn't clear as to what it was, and the only reason I knew it is I took the time to ask the developer what that little thing was, that little walkway-looking thing was. And he says, oh, that's an easement to another piece of property back in behind this development. And people didn't even, there's no questions asked on this stuff when I sit in the meetings. You know, maybe I asked too many questions. I want too much stuff to work, and work smoothly. You know, and if you get a chance, just kind of, if you've got any questions about what I put on here, ask me. Don't make me tell you. Just ask me. I'm not afraid of telling the truth. So, you know, and I know some of you got the email and for one reason or another chose not to respond. And it amazes me in the, in the study meeting today, there was one of the council meeting that had the audacity to ask the utopian people why they didn't respond to him when he sent them an email. He didn't respond to me. So, what's so special? Thanks.
Thank you. By the way, let's get that back on the list next time with a better title on that, and then I'm sure staff will be prepared to talk about that and inform us, okay? Next, we have Kelly Bertas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you can ask, Jake? Question and answer time. Maybe you can do your study on for next week, maybe get some answer on. I know that the Latham estate was voted upon to go ahead and subdivide, split, split, subdivide that area next to me so they could build another home. My question is, is that for the family, for the one year to be able to do that? Because none of the family is going to live in that home, so they're going to be selling that lot, maybe. Who knows? But anyhow, go and have one year to build on that before they have to reapply for that building to apply a lot. If not, why not? Because it's going to be a new family, a new person that's going to be building there on split zoning. I think that ought to be looked at and also recognized where we, at this time, would be able to have that say-so, saying, no, it was a community. We are not for that. Also, my big pet peeve that I like to talk about all the time is weed control on 35th. You know, it seems like we take care of this area right here, but West West Valley, we don't look at. You know, and yet, that's a window of West Valley City coming by the Hunter Park. The weed control out there looks pretty bad. I've said it every week, and nothing gets done. I wish that you would kind of look at that and follow up on DOT or whoever it is responsible for that, even on the ditch banks right next to the road. It's pretty bad. Parking on the streets, I know it was just mentioned just a few minutes ago. This is that time of season where stovewalls start to come, and I live at the very end of a long circle, and your plow comes right from one end, pushes it right to my drive, or mailbox, makes the circle go out. That's not fair to me, but we miss a lot of the road due to all the cars on there. And how many cars per family, per single-family dwellings do we allow? Because I can guarantee there's one home there that has at least five families in it, if not two. And, you know, that's not fair. It's not fair to anybody that has to drive around there. And as I've said each time, the big red toolbox such as a firetruck would not come down there because of the cars parking side by side at certain times of the day. That is interfering anybody's safety. So that should escalate a little bit higher. Please look at these things and concerns that we've asked about, and I've asked about for several months, and it doesn't seem like those get taken care of. We did take care of a few things, and I appreciate that. And I'm glad that I've been able to get that and pull it where I can communicate with you guys about it. I'm really looking forward to working with Jake. I really pushed to get him there in that position, and I'll stand behind anybody that I firmly believe in. I firmly believe that he's there, and he listens to our concerns. And I hope that you guys will listen to it, because we have spoke as voters. We got him in there. You know, you guys are elected officials, and it's not a privilege to be up there. It's an honor, and we're the ones that honor you by putting you there. I hope that you guys look at, we, the group of community, really have a word to say. And if not, we will get somebody in here who will listen. So, I appreciate you, and I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak tonight? Seeing no further ones, we'll close the public comment portion. Mr. Pyle, any comments you have?
No, sir. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmembers? Well, we will have it on there. I will ask one question. It's not discussing the policy, but the latent time of approval is not limited to one year, is it?
No. No, sir.
No. So, just didn't want to have that left hanging there. So, but we'll talk more about that next week. Let's see. So, no council comments. Next, we go to our public hearings. This is with regard to application ZT4-2017 filed by Raymond Crane requesting an ordinance change to our criteria whether a property is eligible to be rezoned to the RM, which is multiple-unit dwelling. And this is one that was carried over from before. We had some discussion on this. And let's see. The change there would be that, whereas close to, I think it was SR-85, which we call Mountain View Corridor, because the access to that property could not be maintained there because of restrictions by UDOT. And so, we asked that staff go back and take a look at that and see if they could find a way to, in a very limited way, allow a change there without opening the door and undoing the work we had done before on this issue. And so, they have, which they've, in the language, identified it or restricted it in such a way that it would only apply if you're within that 660 feet of a proposed interchange on SR-85. And so, the other items would still hold in place. That is the issue before us. With that introduction, then, I'll open the public hearing on this. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? If so, now is the time to come forward.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be before you again. As the mayor stated, that we did go back and we reviewed this proposal that we had previously proposed to you, and we adjusted that so that we'd be within those boundaries which you had set, which actually will be better served in the community because it will provide a safer, safer way for us to be able to develop that property in such a way that they can have entrances and exits safely onto a smaller roadway. So, again, I thank you for the opportunity that we've had. Steve Bastrick was actually the one that wrote up this, the writing on it, and did so masterfully, and I appreciate his help with that. Are there any questions that I can answer for you tonight, or?
Doesn't seem to be.
All right. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate your time and appreciate your vote.
Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak to this? Seeing no one else here to speak to this issue, we will close the public hearing. We will bring it back to the council, and we will consider Ordinance 17-36 of our code to amend those requirements as outlined to the council.
Mayor, I would vote in denial of Ordinance 17-36.
You would make a motion to deny. Okay. What vote we get?
Second motion.
Motion is properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Melling?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
No.
Motion for denial passes by majority.
Okay. Thank you. With that, then, we'll go on to Resolutions 17-176. Authorize the sale of property located at 4478 South Harwarden Drive in West Valley City. This is property the city has owned for a few years and have been waiting for the right time to sell it, and they have determined that now is the right time, and we will recover our basic costs out of that. And let's just see, is there anything else I need to mention there? That's probably enough. That's been being rented for a while, and we have what appears to be a bona fide offer on the property. So, the proposal is that we approve that for sale. To the council.
I move for approval, Resolution 17-176.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Melling?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we go to Resolution 17-177. This is to approve a memorandum between our city and Unified Fire Authority for the Salt Lake Regional Incident Management Team. This is to work together with them to, on incident management for large-scale events. And that, we have worked with them in the past, but it's always best to have it in writing, and so it's clear, and so that there can be appropriate reimbursements, et cetera, et cetera. Nothing unusual about this. Continues what we've done before. So, that's the introduction to it, to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of Resolution 17-177.
Second.
Property before us, any discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Melling?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we go to new business. We need to convene as a board of canvassers for the purpose of accepting and approving the results of the general election held November 7th. We received those final numbers today. Each of you have had a chance to review those. Any who had looked at our agenda before those numbers were blank, because we didn't receive them until now. However, there was not a significant change, but from the numbers that were generally published, the unapproved numbers. It didn't change any of the results. I guess that's a better way to say it. Did not change the outcome of any of the races. With that, then, first, I need a motion to convene as a board of canvassers.
So moved.
Second.
Is this a roll call vote? Voice vote. All in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Passes unanimously. We're now convened as a board of canvassers. We need to consider Resolution 17-178, which are the results and other information in connection with the general election. These are the official final numbers. Once we approve them, they will be official. But we won't get any more information from Salt Lake County. To the count, or to the board.
Move for approval of Resolution 17-178.
Second.
Property before us, any further discussion?
I'd just like to point out, Mayor, as I'm looking at the statistics from the canvas, we had 468 ballots cast on Election Day at physical locations. The rest of the 12,976 ballots were all mailed in. So, it would seem to me that the mail-in ballot is working. Also, we had 31.9% of the voters that are registered in West Valley Vote, which I think is a larger percentage than we've had in the past. So, again, I think that mail-in ballot that the state is encouraging us to go to seems to be working a little bit better than other areas.
But you have to look at different angle on this one, too. You see the people out there, they walk all day long, and they knock on doors, and I think that's, give the credit to Mayor Ron Bigelow and also Jake there. I think that's to create a new way of voters in a city. So, that's a different angle we have to look at, too.
Just for clarification there, there are a number of factors. Also, one of the big factors in this race was the Granite School District bond. There was a large contingent of teachers and others who put up signs, who contacted their neighbors. I don't know the impact of that on these results, but I think it did add to the number of people who voted. That has been true in other votes on school bonds where it was by mail. So, we believe, so it's probable there was some statistically measurable amount that was due to that. And while they were there, they decided to vote in the other races, too. And so, it'll be interesting to see the next time around, when there's not a bond on there, what the difference is. I wish there were more. I think this is less than half of what voted in the presidential election last year. Wasn't it 66%? We wish more would vote. It would be great.
But one nice thing, though, is that because there were so many people that voted last year, the number of registered voters is more. And so, you know, it's more than just the percentage that's increased, but the total number of voters has increased by quite a bit.
And that's true. In fact, I'm glad, and you're the right person to analyze that. You can probably tell me stories about this that I hadn't even thought of yet. And I say that not facetiously. Councilman Norfelt has a very strong background in mathematics, statistical analysis, about anything that, all the things that I don't know as an accountant, I just add the simple numbers. He does the analysis. So, but those are the numbers for us. They are before us, and it is always interesting to look at the results of election. There is always, well, no. If they're unopposed, but in those where more than one person runs, there is a winner and a loser. And all who participate in this process are to be commended. Anyone willing to put their name in front of people in an effort to be elected to office deserves our thanks, win or lose. I only wish more would run. Yes, even if I'm running. And I've encouraged that. I asked a lot of people to run when I was out campaigning, and of course, most turned me down. Many people do not want to take the time or effort to serve in elected capacities, but we hope that more would take an interest. So, thank you for your comments, your feedback on that. With that, then, this is a roll call vote. But seeing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Melling?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Now, do we need to adjourn from board of canvassers? We just go on with our business? Okay. Resolution 17-179, a warranty deed for some property at 3245 West, 2400 South. And then, Resolution 17-180, a warranty deed on property at 7002, 7002 And then, resolution 17-180, a warranty deed on property at 7002, 7002 Parkway Boulevard. These are in conjunction with developments and things that are going on there. And so, these are on our consent agenda, fairly routine. To the council.
Mayor, move for approval of the two items on our, excuse me, on our consent agenda.
Second.
Properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will not hold an executive session after this meeting. We did not cover any legislative, legislative, any legal issues, litigation. And we will put that off until next week. So plan on an executive session for hearing that information next week. We completed the other item. With that, then, I think we're done, unless any comments from the council.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously, we are adjourned.